Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of this New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes at least one opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The board reserves the right to limit the time allotted for public participation while limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We hope that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required on the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA NJSA ten four six, it's a question adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packet and the Trenton Times on January sixth, two thousand twenty-three and amended on August tenth, two thousand twenty-three. It was also distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The board reserves right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy oh one uh one sixty-eight according devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being live streamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time as noted in the agenda or added by the presiding officer, shall quote unquote raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the zoom screen. Once called upon, the member of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the zoom screen. The representative of the sending district has authorized the vote on all such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools. As more specifically designated in NJSA eighteen eight thirty eight point one, in the event this statute is amended, the Walsh Tech precedents over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions for high schools, central administrative and district-wide staff only votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Thank you, Matt. Would you please call the roll?
Sure, Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Betty Baglia.
Here.
Beth Baron.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Jean Durbin.
Present.
Mara Franceschi.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Present.
Rob Christopher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Hey, thanks, Matt. Um, can I please get a motion for adoption of the minutes for October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three? Brian second, Rob.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Betty Baglia.
Yes.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Abstain.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mara Franceschi.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yeah.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Don't talk ponder.
Yes.
Rob Christopher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Can I get a motion now for adoption of the minutes for October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three? Debbie second Mara.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
That's your Baglia.
Yes.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mara Franceschi.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Abstain.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Don't talk ponder.
Yes.
Rob Christopher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then you're right, Matt. We had a lot of meetings uh recently. Uh, can I please get a motion for adoption of the minutes for November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three? Beth second Mara.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Betty Baglia.
Yes.
F Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mara Franceschi.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Abstain.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Rob Christopher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you, Matt. Um, so welcome to this meeting tonight. Uh, this is unusual. We never usually have a meeting Thanksgiving week. Um, but we do have a lot to be thankful for. Uh, first, I'd like to thank Rebecca Gold for stepping in and uh, hand holding on to the reins of the district um as acting superintendent before um. Thank you. My ex. Thank you very much, Rebecca. You did a great job. We're very grateful to you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Yes. Um, second, we're very grateful to Dr. Kathy Foster uh for joining the district as acting superintendent. Um, so she's she has worked in our district for a while now, so she should know better, no, just. But welcome very mu- welcome. We're really glad that you're here. Um, third, I would like to thank um, the voters of Princeton for approving our referendum. Um, you know, we're gonna be able to make, um, thank you. We're gonna be able to make uh some upgrades um for the safety and security of our staff and students. And uh, we appreciate the support in the community and more updates will be provided. I believe on the agenda tonight, there's um, we're gonna, go out to sell the bonds. Is that right, Matt?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so and thank you, Matt, uh, and the facilities committee, uh, operations committee. I'm dating myself. Uh, Beth, uh, Brian, Mara, Jean, Debbie, not Jean, uh, Susan, and who am I missing? Who am I missing? Anybody? All right. Well, thank you for all your work on that. It's yeoman's work that we do. And uh, I just wanna say we have a very busy meeting tonight, so I will turn it over to uh Kathy Foster, but I wanted to say, um, we do have um, a presentation from the Greater Mercer County. Um, uh, JCRC um about teen antisemitism. Um, we had planned uh, this presentation over the summer and it got delayed for various reasons, but um, we're happy to have Naomi Richmond here tonight. Um, unfortunately, over the past few weeks, the antisemitism has really, been in the news lately, and so it's very timely to have you here. So thank you for joining us. Uh, and we will also have our PPS math program review. Um, and just thank you to Dr. Two um for overseeing um, this, the, the audit, the review, and um, we look forward to hearing the findings. And with that, I will turn it over to Kathy Foster.
Oh, thank you, Daphna. Good evening, everyone. It's really good to be here uh tonight with all of you. But if you are like me, I'm also really looking forward to the upcoming gathering around my family table in a few days as we feast upon the noble bird. The seats at our family table have multiplied with welcome addition of partners, spouses, friends, children, grandchildren, and neighbors. It's a time to be grateful for all we have and for each other. And I don't know about your family, but my family is a diverse group of smart, stubborn people with strong convictions who don't always see eye to eye. But we're and we're not afraid to question and challenge each other, but in the end, we support and love each other. Tonight, we gather around a different table. Um, and this table is just as important. Uh, tonight's a virtual table, um, but I want to express my gratitude for having a seat at this table. Um, similar maybe to my family, we are a group of smart, dare I say stubborn, uh, people with strong convictions who may not always see eye to eye. But these differences assist us in opening to understanding multiple perspectives as we wrestle with issues to make the best decisions on the best on behalf of our students. This table provides the opportunity for the community to witness the official business of Princeton Public Schools and a time for all of us to listen to our community partners. I wanna extend my deep appreciation for each of you around the table tonight who have committed countless hours of service. We're grateful for all of those who have come before us and who have begun this important work of educating our students. And we look forward to new members joining and contributing to the mission. I also wanna recognize our two student representatives who are active members and make sure students' own voices are heard as decisions are made. As a learning organization, we need our partners, our parents and our experts to join with us to do our best work. And so tonight, we are really privileged to have Naomi Richmond, who serves as the Chair of the Jewish Committee Relations Council, share the results of the Greater Mercer County Teen Antisemitism Survey. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Naomi to share the results. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and um, thank you for inviting me to be here. It's really an honor. I don't live in Princeton. I live across Route One in West Windsor, so it's special such a little treat for me to be with you today. Um, Matt, are you able to share the slides? Um, and.
You can share also if you'd uh, if it's easy.
Oh, I, I'm actually, I'm actually on a new computer and I wasn't. I thought I understood that you were. If you could, that would be very helpful. So while Matt's doing that, let me just explain um, the Jewish Community Relations Council. We are an affiliate of the Jewish Federation of Princeton Mercer Bucks. So our um footprint is Mercer County, and then we reach a little bit into the surrounding areas in New Jersey as well as into Bucks County, Pennsylvania. And the JCRC's mission is to be an all, an out, an a vehicle for outreach into the broader community, whether it's the school districts, the police departments, the mayors, the county executives, um, representing the interests of the Jewish community. But we're not only concerned with the Jewish community, we form relationships and alliances with other groups. And one of the most important things we do is to stand up against hate of all kinds. So while I'm going to be talking about antisemitism tonight, because that was the focus of our survey, it in no way um is intended to diminish or or not recognize that there are many kinds of hate in this world and we stand against all of them. Okay, um, why don't we go on to the next slide? So why a survey and why now? That was really last spring when the events of October seventh were not, were the furthest thing from anyone's mind. But we were very aware nationally that antis- um, reported cases of antisemitism were rising and it really was on the agenda as a national issue. We heard anecdotal reports from parents and teens that made us want to understand how widespread antisemitism really is among our teens. And not just to rely on those anecdotal reports. We learned that the Kansas City JCRC, and I should mention that we are one of uh, um, of many JCRCs across the country, did a survey of their teens. We read an article about it and we thought, wow, let's build on their work. And we wanted to have quantitative as well as qualitative information. We also held a listening session, and this was sort of at the height of COVID where Zoom was the only way we all communicated with the, with each other. And we heard, we heard a lot of stories and we again wanted, wanted to follow up and hear directly from students. So why don't we go to the next page? We conducted the survey in April and May of last, of this past, of this past spring. Braun Research was, which is a public opinion research firm based in Princeton, hosted and tabulated our survey and they did that pro bono for us, which was very generous. We pub- how did we publicize the survey? And I actually even heard this, this morning that a parent reported that their child had not had the opportunity to fill out the survey. So we really did it informally. We publicized through local synagogues, through other Jewish organizations such as the local Jewish uh summer camp and a lot through informal networking. And we had sixty-nine respondents in grade six through twelve, and I should note that it was countywide and even a little bit beyond. Not exclusively Princeton, although Princeton students made up the largest share uh, compared to any other district. Um, who were the respondents? Well, they were about half and half middle schoolers and high schoolers. Um, almost half and half male and female, or at least we have a good uh sample of each. And then we just asked, how heavily involved are you in Jewish activities outside your home? Just to get a feel for it, and and certainly a lot of them self-reported heavily, which was the forty-six percent, somewhat twenty-three, you know, minimally twenty-eight and three. So these tended to be students who are somewhat engaged in what they self-defined. This Jewish activities, which could mean going to a summer camp, a youth group, um, religious school education, how- however they felt that should be self-defined. So that just tells you a little bit about who responded. Um, I think this is our most important slide, so we'll spend a second on it. Most students say that antisemitism is at least sometimes a problem in their school. So twelve percent said a serious problem, fifty-nine percent a problem sometimes, and twenty-nine percent not a problem at all. So I think that green is sort of the aspirational piece of the pie chart and and uh, our, our goal and our dream is that and at some point in the future, and I think it's in our power to do it, this is gonna be a heavily green pie. But the other slices show us the problem that we have in front of us. Okay, why don't we go to the next slide? So then we asked, well, what kinds of antisemitism have you personally experienced at school? And these were the number, the um, the scale across the bottom are the numbers of students who reported. So um, I have not encountered. Then you have anti-Zionism and anti-Israel, and I just wanna very quickly say that we can all debate Israel and the politics of the Middle East, you know, forever and a day, but this is what the students had to tell us. Um, Holocaust denial or distortion. And then we have Holocaust Nazi or Hitler-related comments or gestures. That's one of the highest bars. Graffiti, conspiracy theories, phrases, Jew jokes, and Jewish stereotypes. So this is what, what students are experiencing, that they are self-reporting us as antisemitic behavior. Um, next question, have you experienced antisemitism online? And we gave them a multiple choice of TikTok, Instagram, Facebook, Twitter and other. And what was quite interesting to me was that the other came back with gaming sites. And you know, to be honest, some sites that I as a um, old person hadn't even heard of, but our kids are on these sites. And I think just one message um to to think about is the extent to which, which parents have the ability and the tenacity to monitor their kids' experiences online, because obviously there's antisemitism out there. And again, this was last spring, well before the events of the past six weeks. Okay. The next issue I wanna talk about is reporting, because if students are experiencing these behaviors and they're not telling anybody about it, they're not reporting it to their teachers, their guidance counselors, their principals. So I'm sure it's, it's impossible for the district to respond. So would you report an incident to someone at school? Well, it's kind of split between yes and no. I'm sorry, yes and don't know. And then that blue slice on the bottom is no, absolute no. So um, again, the good news is that we got a good start at forty-two percent who said, yes, I would report it. But a lot, I would say a lot of uncertainty. And um, then what, would you report it to your parent or guardian? And here it's, it's more of a mixed bag, you know, definitely and probably make up um, you know, thirty-two and thirty-eight, so the, you know, two-thirds or so of the pie. Um, but then you've got probably not reported and not sure. So um, what this tells me is that there's a lot of, still a lot of uncertainty. If you look across these, these two pie charts on what students are doing when something like this happens to them. Okay. And what would make you feel more confident in responding? And you know, there are a variety of, of answers. I'm not gonna read them all. But about halfway down, you know, know that your school understands, sorry, there's type of there antisemitism. Having non-Jewish students learn about antisemitism, an easy place to report anonymously. And and um, you know, then having someone to report to. But I, I think, I think the um, the fact that know that your school understands is the highest bar is, is also telling. Students wanna feel that they're in a safe place where they're understood. Okay, um, this is a very positive um, chart, so I thought I, I'm, I'm getting close to the end. I, I wanted to um, let you know that students do feel comfortable expressing their Jewish identity at school, either always or most of the time. So always is the sixty-two percent. And the sometimes and rarely are, are pretty small. So s- students are, are not, I mean, y- you read articles and it's really scary about other parts of the country and the world where students um, tuck away their, their Jewish stars, they wear a baseball cap over their skull cap and things like that for their own physical safety. I don't think, thank God, that's the problem here. So um, I think this is positive. And then I just selected a few quotes from students. And there, we have many of them. I'm not gonna read all of these. You, you can all see them, but what I wanted to point out, and I'll follow up on it in the next slide, is a lot of these have to do with the Holocaust. The ovens, Heil Hitler, Holocaust jokes, concentration camp. That's quite alarming. And we know that students are learning about the Holocaust, but I think a conversation um to be had and that we've begun having um, is are students learning in the right context? And are they walking away with the lessons that we would all want them to learn? You know, we understand that we're dealing with middle school and high school students. They may not, you know, come into the classroom with the maturity, the wisdom um, to, to truly understand the horror of what happened in the nineteen thirties and forties in Europe, which is very ancient history to them and the um, the harm that they may be causing by using these words um, and these memes um with their, with their Jewish friends. So what are our next steps? This is my last slide. Awareness, so that's why I'm here tonight, to, to raise awareness with you about what our findings were. And then there are some actions, and I, I know that um, the administration is already hard at work on so, on many of these. Um, making sure that antisemitism is included in the DEI curriculum. And I, I think if there's one, you know, a- as you've seen this whole presentation, um, there is antisemitism out there, and I think it really is important that diversity include um Jewish students. We wanna make sure not only that Holocaust education is robust, but also that it's teaching the right lessons and being put in the right context, because if the, if the let, if the, if the result of it is that students are going out and expressing maybe their discomfort or whatever it is by using these terms with other students, I, I think we could all agree that's not the right lesson. And then lastly, and I think particularly at this time when there's so much antisemitism going on in the world, it's up um, almost four hundred percent in the last six weeks. Make sure that our Jewish students feel supported both inside the classroom and, and outside the classroom, which could mean in the hallway, it could mean on the practice fields. It could mean when they're online um, by, um, by the school system. So I think we can stop sharing and I would be very happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you uh, very much, Naomi. Um, it was a very uh, enlightening, enlightening survey, and I wonder if it's something that you could do again this spring and maybe um, have a more uh, have more kids involved.
Um. Um, absolutely, and we can talk about ways to do that, you know? I almost feel that with, with the rise that we're reading about, that this sort of provides a baseline. And we, we didn't necessarily intend it that way, but it will be interesting to come back and, and ask the same questions and see whether we are making progress or hopefully not moving in the wrong direction.
Debbie?
Yes, Naomi, thank you so much for this. Do you know in Kansas City, at first I was curious if they had a lot more um participants and kind of what they've done based on they've heard?
So ironically, although they're a much larger community than we are, they didn't have too many more participants. So um, I think they had eh eh low eighties. Um, they are a, again, a bigger community than we are, but they did theirs also in response to a one, to one particular incident that was particularly disturbing. And um, I think like us, they're, they're working on providing resources, which we are happy to do, helping develop programs, helping to review um, materials or curriculum and just help partner with you in any way that, that would be helpful.
And do you also know, do they have like curriculum stated by the government, you know, like New Jersey has? Career, you know, it's, it's.
I'm not sure about Kansas, to be honest with you.
Okay, okay.
I could follow up, but I, I'm not sure.
Thank you so much.
Susan?
Um, I, I wanted to thank you for presenting the survey. Um, I certainly support. Um, I know I've discussed with Dr. Two and she's discussed with her team about working on some of these issues, but I think, you know, in these times, it's even more important that we're very intentional about the work we do, that the, the people teaching it, that we have clear goals in mind when we put uh Holocaust and, and antisemitism uh, into the curriculum about what we want our students, but it certainly fits into our goals that we have of a portrait of a graduate, to have empathetic graduates, to have critical thinkers, to have informed global citizens. And so I think it's imperative that we uh weave this into both our curriculum and in our social emotional uh health initiatives that we have in the schools. So thank you for, I think this will help propel that work.
Yeah, and I don't know, uh, Kim or Kathy, if you wanted just to provide a little uh, information, but uh, of some of us met with um Kathy, I'll leave it to you. Go ahead.
Um, so we had the pleasure of meeting um, work, uh, meeting with uh Naomi uh this morning uh, along with other uh parents in the community. Uh, and, and we really appreciate, um, they were helping educate us and identify some areas um of action uh, that the district could take. And I know that um, Dr. Two um, already followed up, I think with you, Naomi, and uh, you're returning to the district. Um, I think first to start, which I think is a great place to start with, with our teachers um, to help them understand um, the definition of antisemitism, um, the, the sort of the what to look for's. Um, and so, and, and that way we can um, be more intentional uh with our students as well. I don't know, Kim, if you wanted to add something that I, that I missed.
I know, I think you captured. I think um, you know, this is a continuing effort and we want all kids to feel safe and a sense of belonging. And the one thing that I just really wanna point out to um, parents and caregivers on the call is monitoring social media. Uh, one of the concerns that we are seeing um, with students is sort of resharing posts or reacting to posts that they might not even understand the full context of. And it's really problematic, some of the things that um, have, have um, been shared. Um, and I also encourage um caregivers and parents to, if there are things that your child is seeing that you are concerned about to reach out to the school so that we are aware, because we can't act on something and educate if we don't know about it. Um, and so I think it's a two-pronged um process. We're a partnership and a team. Um, and the more that we're all alert and aware to some of the things that kids are being exposed to and are reposting and sharing with others, um, the more that we can educate um, and, and talk about why um, certain um, speech isn't tolerated, how it ties to historical context and, and all of the things that Naomi had shared. Um, so I think it's very important that we have a three hundred and sixty degree support system of our students.
F?
Yeah, I just wanna share my gratitude uh for this presentation today and also to hear that you're doing work with our, with our, our staff and teachers and helping provide resources. And as you said, I think in these times, it's really important that we educate uh very much on antisemitism, but also all forms of hate. Because um, it's just on the rise in so many different forms, and I think our teachers are on the front lines in many ways, having to deal with the events from day to day, and it's probably things that they, many of them never, I mean, it's just not, none of us have had to deal with this level of of um, hate that's in the air and in the, in the me- social media and all over. So thank you for helping provide resources. And thank you to our staff for, for meeting that and being willing to add yet another thing, but a very important thing. Thanks.
And I just want to echo the thanks as well. I really appreciate um, you being here tonight, Naomi. I'm wondering, Dr. Foster and Dr. Two, if you see this coming to SAC as an update um, or to the full board, just sort of understanding what's happening, um, what, you know, what we're sharing with teachers and, and what work is being done on the curriculum.
I'm probably SAC, and then I think. I'm probably SAC and then I think sort of the following up then with the full board. We are revising, as we were sharing today, there are brand new ELA standards throughout the state of New Jersey that have to be on the books by September twenty twenty four. So it's very good timing of revising some of our courses and how they align then with our history courses, our pathways to racial literacy course, our Pearl course, so all of those are on the books for revision. So it will go to SAC and then the full board anyway. And then Naomi, I have an email exchange going about January of her coming in, possibly the first week of January to work with our admin and counselors and anti-bullying specialists first, and then sort of thinking like, how do we want to then turnkey it from there? So yes, happy to report back at SAC or whatever way the board would like us to do that.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Naomi.
Thank you, and I just want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving.
So next up, as you can see, you know, curriculum and instruction is what we do. So the next piece is we have our math review, program review. It is really a robust review and it will be, I think the executive summary, I believe, is already posted on the website and I think the full report, Kim, will be posted tomorrow morning. So we want to, Kim, I don't know if you want to introduce Angela, and I know you've worked so closely with her for what, the last four months, five months?
Six, seven months, yeah. So thank you, everyone. We appreciate your time tonight on this Thanksgiving week and we appreciate the ADL team coming tonight to present some overview. I just want to kind of back up for a second and kind of talk about the purpose of tonight's presentation versus next week's presentation. So the ADL team, which is comprised of Angela, Judy and Charles, they'll, you know, I'm sure introduce themselves again when they do the overview, has been working closely with the district internal team over the past several months to conduct a full audit of our K twelve math curriculum and also look into our computer science programming options and supports. They did focus groups, they did surveys, they got into classrooms, they audited our curriculum, they'll go into all the different data that they looked at. And it's very, very comprehensive. And so there's about an eighty-page report that will be posted on the website tomorrow. And there's also sub-reports that go into, you know, the data and all of those pieces. Tonight is just an overview for the board, the board has the full report of sort of the big picture and that big findings and sort of next steps that the district can possibly take to move forward, to strengthen our existing math program and computer science program. Next Thursday night, which is the thirtieth of November, we will be having a webinar for all Princeton community stakeholders. That is ninety minutes to, that goes in a little bit deeper, give people some time over the holiday weekend. If they really want some reading while they're traveling or want to, you know, avoid the conversation at the dinner table, they really want to read about math, they're going to have plenty of time to do that. And so they'll come next week and give a little bit more detail about the process and the findings in the report and have some opportunities for some Q and A at the end of that webinar. So tonight is just an overview, because this is a board meeting, we have other business to conduct and the board can ask some questions. The community piece will be next Thursday. I would be remiss if I didn't say a couple of pieces of gratitude, as Kathy said about Thanksgiving. I'm so grateful to the board for allowing us to do this process. I think it really sets us up for success in the future and sets us on a goal for the next three to five years to have strategic plan in place specifically for these departments. It really, as still a newer staff member with Tiffany Brennan as our, you know, new six to twelve math supervisor, with Sarah Moore as still a newer staff member as our K five elementary supervisor, it helps us sort of build that coherence that Angela is going to sort of talk about, about systems of curriculum, professional development, instructional resources, standards, course placement, assessment, you name it. There's so many pieces that have to kind of work together and this sort of helps us get on that plan. And what I ask for the community is some patience with time, because these are all moving pieces and we have to get them all sort of, the arrows moving in the same direction. And I just want to say thank you again to our internal team, which consisted of different staff members from across the district who let us come into their classrooms, who filled out surveys, they really gave us a lot of their time and we appreciate their feedback. And then ATO, because they were very much always checking with us in feedback loops to make sure that we were, they were on the right track, that we heard what they were saying and that what they were producing as a product was going to be helpful for us. So without further ado, I will let Angela take the reins here with her and her team and they can get started.
Okay, thank you very much. I do have a slide deck, so I'm going to pull that up right now. There we go. Okay, so good evening, everyone. First, I would like to say thank you to the Princeton Public Schools Board of Education for inviting us today to share an overview of the conclusions and recommendations from the mathematics program evaluation. I am Angela Leiler, I served as lead evaluator for the review. And my colleagues are on with me this evening. They are Judy Barbera and Charles Brazza, and you will meet them as we go through our presentation. So first, I too would like to recognize all the hard work in the district. We are grateful for the opportunity provided to us through this experience and really impressed by the commitment of the Princeton Public Schools community. We, I specifically want to thank Dr. Two for overseeing and organizing the project. There were a lot of pieces, moving parts. And she really went out of her way to make sure everything was coordinated. It was quite an effort, so we really appreciate that. We'd also like to express our appreciation to the teachers who took time away from their classrooms to actively participate in all aspects of the process, as well as those in leadership positions who escorted us and sat with us and were willing to just clarify information when it needed clarifying. And it's really been an effort that was a result of everyone coming together and working together.
And so we always start with why, start with our purpose. And we will say that throughout the evaluation process, we began all significant conversations with a focus on the purpose of the evaluation. It reminded us of the aspirational goals of the Princeton community and the commitment to each and every individual student. We embraced an inquiry-driven process. And we return to the four guiding questions that you see on the screen right now throughout the program evaluation experience.
The evaluation questions were addressed by exploring the following data sources, types of curricula, systems and structures, and stakeholder perceptions. Data collected during the mathematics review included student caregiver and educator surveys and focus groups, classroom visits, and document reviews.
So based on the extensive information that we collected, we were able to examine various aspects of the mathematics program. First, what we're going to do is highlight for you program strengths. And then we will present areas that require some improvement. We'll share our recommendations and provide next steps at the end of our presentation. So as you can see on this slide, the mathematics program has many strengths. There's a strong written curriculum at the secondary level, there are effective teaching and learning practices occurring in the classroom. There are support structures for those who need more time, as well as those who need to be challenged. Students have the opportunities to take advanced classes at middle school and high school. And there's a high level of interest in computer science. And most importantly, the Princeton Public Schools community is dedicated and committed to providing students with an excellent mathematics education.
So it was then in articulating these strengths that helped us to really begin to identify some potential needs. They were based on some level of discrepancy that we noticed. And we often really reached the conclusions that really called more for alignment and integration of structures and systems.
First, one of the first areas we examined was an excellent education. This term excellent education really refers to a strong foundation that begins with the curriculum. While there is a written curriculum, it varies in quality. But most importantly, it is, it is important to recognize that the curriculum is not designed to meet the unique needs of the Princeton mathematics program. Adjustments are needed at both the elementary and middle school levels to ensure that all students are prepared for high levels of mathematics and advanced courses. And once those changes are made in curriculum, other systems need to be revised in order to align with the curriculum. And then all educators need to use it as a basis for making instructional decisions.
Next, we look through the lens of effective teaching and learning. And we noticed that in both our classroom visits, as well as conversations with teachers and with students, that there was a level of inconsistency in teaching practices. We believe that implementing a system of effective, research-based learning practices across all classrooms would enhance teacher effectiveness and promote more connections for students in their learning. A more consistent approach in the use of curriculum and assessment practices will then strengthen equity. And with those two anchors in place, teachers can concentrate on differentiating their instructional practices to respond to the diverse student learning needs. Although the evaluation was focused on teaching and learning within the context of the Princeton classrooms, through many conversations and survey results, we did notice that a significant number of learners do receive support in mathematics outside of the school day. The pie chart on this slide provides additional information on how learners actually access that support outside of the school day. So I'll pause here so that you can read the quotes on the screen. And as you will notice in these three quotes from different caregivers, the reasons for accessing support outside of the school day really do vary from student to student.
An important need that emerged was to increase enrollment of Black and Hispanic students, those eligible for free and reduced lunch, students who receive special education services, and multilingual learners in advanced mathematics coursework. We also are looking at cultivating an environment where all students experience academic expectations and looking at strengthening support structures to adequately address the need of all learners.
So you can see here, this, in this quote from a multilingual learner, that there are some students who feel that they are not held to the same expectations as their peers and that their learning potential is not addressed. The last area we focused on was the computer science program. The first two items, the number of teachers available to teach computer science and the infrastructure must be addressed to expand the program. Currently, the program cannot meet the demand or the interest expressed by the students.
This slide, this, go ahead, Judy.
Yeah, now we launch into the process of crafting our recommendations. And in doing that, we really did maximize common themes and promoting and promoted alignment throughout the recommendations. So as we move into the segment, you'll notice that the recommendations will not feel like a checklist, nor are they extremely specific. Rather, each one is a concept that will warrant a planning process that is both inclusive and collaborative.
So I'll give everyone a second to read through these recommendations. And as you do, what I'd like you to notice is that the recommendations are interconnected. By addressing one area, you will then, that action will then lead to another action. And purposeful connections among these different actions can lead to a more cohesive mathematics program. So for example, a strong written curriculum that clearly identifies learning outcomes will assist teachers in more purposefully differentiating instruction.
Okay, so this slide describes the recommendations regarding Princeton Public Schools' next steps. So strengthen and unify the current systems and structures such as curricula, teaching and learning, professional learning, course placement, assessment, and communication in an effort to provide a more consistent approach so all students have access and opportunity to an excellent mathematics education.
And I'm going to take us back to one of the first slides in the beginning of this presentation that identified the why, which is why or what Princeton Public School wants for its students. The why is really important because it sets the context for all other actions. The specific recommendations are the what. They sit within the context of these steps, which are how. So we are going to go through, how do we get to that point where Princeton Public Schools can meet its goals? And so the how is collective efficacy, coherence, collaboration, and communication. The success of the recommendations and the next steps are contingent on collective efficacy, which can be developed through coherence, collaboration, and communication. Collective efficacy is at the core of the changes that are needed because it is not the responsibility of one person, one group, or one building to ensure all students receive an excellent education that encourages all students to achieve at high levels. Rather, it is the collective responsibility of all stakeholders. These next steps outline how to work towards building that collective efficacies so the recommendations meet your goals.
So we certainly recognize that there is a level of coherence and passion that Princeton has a sense of in determining in their mathematics program. When we return though to the articulation of purpose, what we strongly recommend is revisiting and perhaps just recommitting to the mission and vision of the Princeton mathematics program. It exists, the question is, is it embraced? The second theme is one of collaboration. And once established, there really is significant internal capacity that we strongly believe can and should be used to achieve your goals. Once again, you notice both the themes of collaboration and inclusivity, one that we're very proud of. one that we're very proud of having modeled together as we work through this process.
Communication, communication must be improved to build trust and confidence. Survey and folk group data strongly conveyed the need to improve communication between teachers, students, teachers and teachers, teachers and administrators, and educators and parent and caregivers.
And the recommendations and next steps that we have presented will take time. As noticed by this, by, as noted by this teacher's comment, the valuation process was the first time, was the first step. It is through taking these actions that there will be a building of trust in the system to really create a cohesive program for students. We recommend a phased approach to addressing these recommendations and next steps, beginning with planning, then allowing time for implementation and connections to be made, and then evaluating the impact of those changes. In this way, you can build that cohesive program that will lead all students to high levels of mathematics. And now we turn it over to some questions and discussions from the board.
Thank you so much for that presentation. And we really appreciate how in-depth he went and the focus, just on making sure that everyone is receiving an excellent math education. Thank you to Kim and to Tiffany for your work on this. And the, the meeting is going to be next, the, the longer meeting with Q and A from the community will be next Thursday. Is that at seven?
At seven PM, it's from seven to eight thirty and starting tomorrow morning, folks can access the report. So this was like a thirty thousand foot view of everything. So that, you know, as much detail as you guys want, you can read the report starting tomorrow on the website.
How many pages is the report?
Seventy-nine Angela.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then there's about eighty pages of sub reports as well. So lots of in-depth reading. And, you know, I just think I can't say enough that you can see all the different pieces. And this really creates an action plan for the district as Angela had on that slide about planning and implementation of like, not that this wasn't work, but now the real work begins because now we take all of these pieces and start refining them and honing them with the support of a collaborative group.
And I forgot to thank Sarah. Thank you, Sarah. And, and the meeting is going to be on Zoom and we'll provide the link on the website. Is that correct?
Yes. So the, we'll send out the link again. It was already sent out and we'll send it out.
Okay, great. Thank you. Pepsi.
And my comment was going to be what Dr. Two just said, this is really the beginning. It sounds like the end. We're presenting a report, but it's actually the beginning. And it was really important to our staff and to the board that this be a really useful document that lays out a framework for us to improve, make changes. You know, as you say, you know, see what is, is great in our district and sharing that, but also improving. So thank you for working with us and I, you know, encourage the public to attend next, next week. Thank you for putting that time together. I think it's really helpful.
You know, having seen the longer report, it's very meaty, a lot of questions. Do you, has a lot of like information in it. So my, so one, do you want questions ahead of time from the public so that you'll be able to address those? Like how I know our community is very passionate and, you know, interested in math. So is it going to be a back and forth of questions? Do you want questions ahead of time or in, or is it just going to be in the chat as you go?
So we talked about Tiffany, Sarah and I like moderating and kind of glumping things together because we wanted to make sure we weren't having people submit all these questions, but then there are going to be answered in the presentation. Do you know what I'm saying? Because it's going to be about sixty minutes of like this in-depth work and then thirty minutes for, for Q and A at the end of the webinar. So there will be an opportunity for people to submit questions during the webinar. Yes.
The bar sack meeting was any preview of it. Like there's a lot of back and forth and questions.
Maybe we'll do forty-five minutes in depth and forty-five minutes questions.
Part of our questions, part of it is next steps and part of it is very, you know, detailed kind of teacher speak and language of what your work and your team's work is going to be. So having the community understand that, I think is going to be really great. And then providing as you guys are working, you know, other opportunities for everyone to learn the progress and, and what the short-term steps are and what the medium and then the final version is, is going to be great. So we're very excited that we have a way to move forward finally.
Thank you.
Angela, oh Beth, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to echo Susan and just say, you know, as a parent, my eldest is now twenty-one. My kids have been in this district for the last, last, I don't know, fifteen, eighteen years, whatever. We've been here since pre-K. And I even at this thirty thousand level, foot, foot level view, I appreciate that you're pulling in some of the common themes that as parents we've noticed have been lacking for many years. So I look forward as well, like Susan says, to seeing how we do with this in an organized and, and logical way to kind of bring, not only address currently the children that we have because they have some really urgent needs. I think there's been things missed and then we're post-pandemic. But then how we're going to restructure the program to make sure going forward, we're stronger and more complete. And the piece about computer science is also close to my heart in that I had a child who had a very strong interest in, you know, saw up close how that program worked for some and for many it didn't. And there's been a need for many years to strengthen that. So thank you very much for all of this. And I look forward to hearing how we're going to implement it.
And I would be remiss if I didn't say this in, in this format, or this forum, I should say. New Jersey has adopted new K-12 math standards. So this is an opportune time to look at course alignment, course standards, placement process. Like it, it's all sort of coming together because we do have to do a deeper dive with our standards and our mathematical practices. So this is all sort of coming together at the right time because we have to do this work anyway. Because the school districts, even though New Jersey just adopted the standards, have to have them on the books by September twenty twenty-four. So this is really good work and it's sort of, how do I put this? We're not doing work and then redoing work. Like they're, it's coming together at the same time.
That was the plan all along, right?
Yeah, that was the plan. We figured it out. Yeah.
Quick question is, do we need to take time to examine how we got here? Because what we don't want to do is end up here again in ten years. And, and so one of the things I'm really interested in, and again, not a lot of time because it's important that we move forward. But we got here for a reason. And I, I certainly don't know what it is, but I think it's important to take some time to think about that because, you know, if you take your eye off the ball, again, you could end up, you know, backsliding into, into that position. So that's just sort of my, sort of my one concern, and I hope we take a, take some time to do that.
And, and that has been Angela's caution since we've been meeting and saying basically, you know, you can't just look at the middle school. You have to see how algebra thinking starts at the elementary level and embed those things before you change things at the middle school or the high school, right? It's a system. And so when you only impact one part of the system, it's not affecting change. And as you said, Michelle, and this is where we are, where we are, right? So we have to kind of think from that global view of every decision we make, how is it linking? You can't just change curriculum. There has to be professional development for staff and buy-in from the staff to then implement the curriculum, right? So they, all these systems work together. And I think that's a really good point of, we need to move the ball down the field. But like, let's make sure we're seeing the end zone and that we're all moving toward the same end zone.
Oliver.
Yeah, kind of just one thing I wanted to note from the student perspective is I think math education and a lot of, a lot of students is something that they really value and that they, they're really interested in. And I think just like one thing in all those times that might not be the best and there might be some conflict with math sometimes, I think at the end of the day, a lot of students are really interested in jinking in their like mathematical horizons and just getting more involved into math.
And thank you, Oliver. We appreciate that perspective and that you'll, you'll see in the report that comes out loud and clear. Like we, we have students who really are passionate about the subject area and want these opportunities and feel, you know, some things, like we said, there's some really great things to celebrate, but there's definitely things in areas and especially consistency being one of them that we need to work on as a school district.
But thanks, Oliver. We appreciate that. We're all here for the students. So we appreciate your feedback. So if you guys can attend and tell your friends to attend the math meeting next week, we'd appreciate your feedback. I, I just wanted to thank Angela, Judy, and Charles. Angela, you've been very, very, very flexible with us. You agreed to do an extra meeting next week. And we're really grateful for that. And, and it's been a real pleasure. And we do have to thank Dr. Kelly for, I believe she worked with you before and you're just a great fit for our district. So thank you.
Thank you.
Have a happy Thanksgiving. I don't know if anyone else wanted to say anything.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I'm glad we had this opportunity to share this evening.
Thank you Tiffany and Sarah for coming.
Always good to see you all. Good night. Take care.
Thank you. So the last piece under the superintendent's report is just a quick update on the incredible work that has been happening with the long-term planning committee and some of the designs. So I'm going to turn that over to Matt and maybe if Brian wants to also chime in. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Foster. Yeah, we're basically doing our, this committee's report in, in this section of the meeting. I think Brian McDonald, co-long-term planning chair, was going to give this report. We have been working very hard dealing with our schools, our architects and our planner, as well as the committee on coming up with a game plan to move forward. So Brian.
I'll jump in. The headline is that the robust presentation that we had anticipated would take place tonight is going to take place on Tuesday, December twelfth. And the reasons for that will be apparent shortly. The long-term facilities planning committee met on Thursday, November sixteenth at four-thirty in the afternoon. We received an update from district architect George Duthie of VHD on the status of planned development for expansion of our middle school and one or two of our elementary schools, Community Park and Littlebrook. George and his team have met with the principals and their teams at the middle school, Community Park and Littlebrook. And Matt participated in these meetings. Last week, Matt, George and team members also had a productive meeting with the town planner, Justin Lesko, zoning officer Derek Bridger, and land use engineer Dan Weisman. Based on these meetings and significant work done by the architects, FPHD confirmed the feasibility of expansion planning for the middle school, CP, and if desired, Littlebrook. As you recall, based on community feedback and further review, we decided to evaluate the possibility of expanding both Community Park and Littlebrook to accommodate four classes at each grade level, which we refer to as the four-four model. This would be an alternative to expanding only Community Park to accommodate five classes per grade level, which we call the CP five model. Based on the determination that the four-four model is feasible, further design development will be done to evaluate the impact on the core spaces, including cafeterias, gyms, libraries, music rooms, and art rooms, and estimated costs. In our first week, Dr. Foster has already engaged in the planning process and will be involving Dr. Two as they work to validate the academic and programmatic aspects of the evolving plans to ensure strong alignment between and among our professionals and our school leaders. The combination of Dr. Foster's active engagement, the desire to have Dr. Two more involved, and the need to further develop plans for Littlebrook and Community Park means that this phase of the planning process will extend into December and possibly January. According to our architect, construction costs have escalated quite significantly over the past five years. And the cost of expanding and renovating two or three of our schools is likely to exceed fifty million dollars. These numbers are still being refined and we'll be ready for discussion at our December twelfth board meeting on at least a preliminary basis. And if needed, at our first board meeting in January. The committee is next scheduled to meet on Thursday, December seventh. The board will receive a more detailed update from our administrators, architect, and planner at our December twelfth meeting. I want to note that we're very grateful for all of the work being done by our architects, our planner, and our business administrator, Matt Bolden. And we're very pleased that Dr. Foster has already rolled up her sleeves and will be very involved as the planning process moves forward. And pause to take any questions that people, board members may have. And thanks to the committee.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Foster, anything else?
No, that's it for, for my report.
All right. Well, happy sixth day. Thank you. All right, we're moving on now to item G one, the student board member report with Oliver and Alex.
Sure. Yeah. Hi. I'm sorry about this overly dramatic lighting I'm dealing with. But it's so exciting to be here and to share a look at the goings-on with the PHS from the student body's perspective. Lots of exciting things went on this month. We had Dr. Correll return to PHS for a day to perform a chemistry experiment. We had a dodgeball championship in the gym with some neighboring school districts.
Oh, and then you obviously can't forget about Halloween, where the English department dressed up as Taylor Swift in her different eras.
Yeah, but I think the first thing we discuss in earnest might have to be the sporting news.
So from the girls' cross-country team qualifying for the state championship to the boys' soccer team and the girls' volleyball team winning their respective statewide tournaments, it's been an exciting few weeks.
And I'm sure you don't need us to tell you that students of PHS were excited about these results. But from an administrative standpoint, it was fun to get emails from our school's athletic director about when the games were and how we could buy tickets to show up to them.
This touches on two larger beliefs that Alex and I hold about PHS, which is first, students are almost always happy to give up some of their time and energy when it comes to supporting each other.
And second, when extracurricular clubs or teams are given the ability to travel and do something cool, whether it be compete in a tournament or conduct a science experiment or attend a workshop, they can come back around to bolster school spirit and engagement on the whole. On that note, actually, we should talk about M-SAM.
So this month, ten PHS students traveled to Madison, Wisconsin to participate in the multicultural student achievement network's national conference, helping the school improve in terms of its diversity, equity, and inclusion.
PHS students, including of course Oliver and I, we love it when our peers get the chance to represent PHS and excel across a range of different contexts. Coming to school is simply more fun when you get the sense that your school community is doing more than just taking the required score slowed in the building.
Yeah, so focusing on hard academic data, whether it be test scores or college acceptancees, often fails to tell the whole story. If we want our school to perform better on, say, the NJSLA science section, we can't just ask questions about what sort of curriculum is being taught in our science classes. We also, as the board has been doing, need to make sure that students and teachers feel welcome in a vibrant school community. It's genuinely fun to be a part of.
Yeah. And for that reason, as student liaisons, Oliver and I will advocate not only for the board's continued support of existing extracurricular activities and opportunities, but also for creating the kind of regulatory environment where new ones can emerge. We're working on getting direct student input before we propose anything concrete. But that's just, you know, a quick word about where we're going to be going in the future.
So thank you all so much for your time and I hope you guys all have a wonderful holiday.
Yeah, appreciate the chances.
Thank you, Oliver and Alex. I'm very impressed with your presentation and delivering. And I'm thinking maybe I need to practice with Dr. Foster before the next meeting. So you don't embarrass me, but that's okay. That was a great report and we look forward to seeing what your recommendations are. And if you can do some fundraising, we'd appreciate that. Michelle.
I would be remiss in not adding on to that amazing report that the school also enjoyed the fall production of The Great Gatsby, which was a great success. that the school also enjoyed the fall production of The Great Gatsby, which was a great success. And um, it's just been an amazing, I don't think I've ever seen such an amazing couple of weeks or several weeks at Princeton High School. You guys have just been blowing it up and we're super proud of you. And thank you so much for the whole student body for being engaged and participating and because it's really hard with the academic responsibilities you have. So bravo to our students and great job.
Brian.
Um, I just also wanted to know the piece of alumni news um that is relevant to Oliver and Alex, but one of your predecessors, Sam Harshbarger, um is a recent recipient of a Rhodes Scholarship um as a student at Princeton University. Um, he's one of our uh something we can all be very proud of. Uh, so no pressure, guys.
All right, well, thanks very much. Um, Oliver and Alex, you're welcome to stay, but we'll move on to the meeting. But uh, we look forward to your report in um December. Okay, now we're going to move on to our first public comment on agenda items and non-agenda items. Um, so if you please raise your hand. And we'll put you in the queue. Right now, there are no ticker. Uh, there's one. All right, um. Matt, you got it. If you could just please uh just let us know the street and town you live on and if you could please keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Sure. Hi, it's Brett Jack now, uh, Faran Road in Princeton. Uh, the following letter was sent to the Princeton Board of Ed administrators and supervisors and it relates to a meeting earlier today that um Dr. Foster actually referenced. Uh, this letter was signed by approximately a hundred and fifty plus uh P P S uh family members. Uh, we, the parents and members of the Princeton and Cranberry communities, wanted to reach out to Princeton Public Schools to let you hear our collective voices. The unprecedented rise in antisemitism has us fearful, especially seeing how it has spread and taken over many college campuses. P P S is in a prime position to help to ensure that the children graduating from our schools are truly prepared to lead lives of purpose and not hate. Jews are a tiny minority. Out of eight billion people in the world, sixteen million, only point two percent are Jewish. Jews are the definition of a minority and one sad indicator of such is in the hate that Jews receive. Nearly sixty percent of all religious-based hate crimes in the U S are against Jews. And things have risen to unprecedented levels this past month. At what was already a high level, there has been a three hundred and eighty-eight percent increase since October seventh of reported antisemitic incidents here compared to this time last year. P P S has taken a large role in incorporating D E I curriculums in our schools and we are writing to ensure that teaching about antisemitism, currently the number one hate crime in our hunt, in our country and always the number one religious hate crime, has a prominent part, not a side note, in that education. Antisemitism education must have its own unit, not just one or two days of discussion in a six-week middle school pathways to racial literacy course. It must have a unit in the mandatory online racial literacy course at the high school to truly outline and identify what it is. Our students must learn what antisemitism means, how it can be related and what kind of pain and and what kind of pain and danger it causes. Holocaust education has long been mandated in the state of New Jersey and we appreciate that it is being woven into curriculums such as English seven and English two war and genocide unit. We need to ensure that all teachers are including it and have the proper professional development to support their lessons. We also need to ensure that it is being taught with historical facts and background in our social studies classes as today we are seeing that a lack of factual understanding is leading to the rise in antisemitism. P P S had to change to be proactive and now needs to additionally be reactive to what is happening around us. Awareness of antisemitism and knowledge of the Holocaust can no longer be assumed or briefly mentioned. The education our children receive must be thorough and founded in facts to ensure that our children feel safe at school and all of the students P P S sends off into the world have perspective and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Matt, do we have anyone else?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, yes, uh, am I okay to speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, hi, I'm, my name's Leanna Junk. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Um, and I live on Linden Lane. Uh, I attended one of what feels like many board meetings ago. Um, and I shared my disappointment at that time, just hearing about the low test scores for black and brown students and my concern as a black parent, as an educator and as the preschool director for many black and brown students who will enter our school district next year. Uh, I've been really fortunate that I've had a career in education where the teachers, staff and families were very diverse and particularly in schools where the staff, teachers and the leadership reflected the communities of the students and the families that we served. Um, I do congratulate all of the new and returning board members. Uh, yet I cannot help but know that the leadership of our district um doesn't currently reflect the communities of all the families, particularly for black and brown families here in Princeton. Um, and I'm sure you're aware that the research shows that groups that consist of diverse backgrounds are more successful in many ways, but particularly into taking diverse perspectives into consideration when meeting needs and making big decisions. And I, and I'm sure others as well, would like to know how the board will ensure that the voices and the needs of black and brown communities um and other communities that aren't reflected in the leadership will have their voices heard. Um, this may look like advisory committees or other initiatives that exist, but I'm not currently aware of that could might be uplifted. But I do encourage that the board prioritize this and just have the self-awareness to acknowledge that strategic initiatives are needed to make sure that these voices that aren't included in the meetings are heard and uplifted.
Thank you. And I'll just say that we've we've already had, I've already had that conversation with uh Dr. Foster um and some of my fellow board members and uh, you know, we, we understand that the board um you know, doesn't reflect necessarily the demographics of the community and we're committed um we're, we're committed, you know, to ensuring that all kids um get what they need. And uh, I, I think that was evident from the math report. Um, we have a special education uh report that we, that needs uh attention. Um, so I appreciate your um, your speaking tonight and as we have more information, we'll share.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone else with their hand raised.
Okay, we'll have another public comment later. All right, uh, moving on now, item I, harassment, intimidation and bullying. Then we're going to go to the board committee um reports. We heard from Brian. Now we're going to hear from, I'm guessing Susan for operations.
That, that is correct. Um, so we didn't want too much of Brian in one meeting. Um, so the operations committee met November eighth at eight A M. As always, we are open to the public, uh, so we welcome uh any members of the public to join. If what I described sounds really exciting and you want to learn uh more. Um, but I will echo what Daphne said earlier. We're very excited to uh have the referendum passed and I know that uh Matt and that his team and now Dr. Foster are working diligently to uh start the projects that were approved um by our town voters. So we got an update on the two thousand and twenty-two referendum projects. Uh, finally, the skylights at J P were being installed and the siding was being completed. Um, they have begun planning for the rest of the roofwork uh both at P H S uh and P M S. And so that work is scheduled for next summer. We are, we still have uh bids out for the elementary roof projects and the elementary HVAC, so we're hoping that a robust bidding process will enable uh the district to award these final projects of the, of that uh referendum. And Matt did report that so far, we still have a couple more projects to award, but the um, that referendum has been running slightly under budget, so that's also exciting news for the district. Um, so um, planning will begin on the referendum that just passed. Uh, Matt indicated that the cafeteria project and the uh safety and security measures, particularly the doors, will be some of uh their first es- efforts within the district. We also got an update as we always do each meeting on sustainability. Um, they're focused on looking at the energy reports and seeing how each school, what each school could do to improve uh those reports. Uh, transportation is still exploring getting our first electric uh buses in the district and what grants might be available, so we can do that. Uh, looking at waste options within our school so that we can be even uh more sustainable, something that our community and our kids in particular care about. And that green, and it was announced that green teams now exist in all of our schools, so having that active participation from the members of those green teams is something we're very excited about. And then finally, uh, Dave Harding, Matt had Dave Harding give an update on some uh work he's doing within the district. Oliver and Alex will be glad to know that there is uh an audit done of all of our bathrooms and small projects are being uh completed around the district to ensure that um when you go into uh any bathroom throughout the district, that uh you could feel that it's well-maintained and um all repairs are are done. So we really do appreciate uh focus on both the big prob- projects and the referendum, but the general maintenance around the building. We want everyone to feel um that their buildings are well cared for. So our next meeting will be November uh twenty-ninth. Um, we hope to, you know, members of the public can join us. Um, and that is our report for this evening.
Thank you, Susan. Um, moving on to personnel, I'm going to guess Debbie because Mar did it last month. I want to see.
You're good. You're good.
We'll see, we'll see. All right.
Um, so personnel met on um November ninth. We discussed increasing the nurse daily rate for overnight trips and extended day coverage. We also discussed that the minimum hourly wage will be increasing the beginning of the year to fifteen thirty. So several hourly salaries will be increased due to this in the district. Uh, we continue as our discussion on many other personnel issues. And uh, we'll meet again next month. Thank you.
Debbie, all right, policy. I'm going to guess it's Beth. Am I right?
No.
Jean, where's, oh, there you are.
I'm here. Thanks. Um, we met on uh November third, eight fifteen, uh virtually as we do. At next meeting is December first, eight fifteen. Policies that are up for second read are on the agenda tonight. Um, it's still policy alert two thirty-one, which is the same batch of policies we looked at at our last uh board meeting. Um, administration is going through um a few other um policies to spruce them up and they'll be on second read in December. Um, that's really it. Sorry. Not much else.
All right. Well, thank you, Jean. We appreciate it. And then uh student achievement uh with Michelle Tuck Ponder. But I had, I, I was given a heads up, so I can't be credit for that.
Uh, okay, okay. I wanted to surprise you. Uh, so the student achievement committee met on November third. Uh, we had um a presentation on integrated electives and school-to-work program. Um, we had, it was a great presentation. Um, Cindy Bregzen- Brigenser um shared information on our school-to-work program and it was really it quite, quite interesting and exciting and and great. I'm delighted to know how much participation there is from our students and local businesses um to help students develop careers. Um, we also talked about the seal of biliteracy. Um, Priscilla Russell, supervisor of um W L D L I E S L bilingual education, um discussed those plans. Um, it's a little controversial, but we had a very, a very good discussion about it. Uh, we talked about the middle school schedule and Principal Burr was attended the meeting and um talked about future scheduling options um because of increased enrollment. And he also discussed the possibility of joining a principal's council of all the middle schools in the area to um work together to try to resolve some of the problems um or some of the challenges that are facing on our areas' middle schools. Uh, we, um, our next meeting is on Friday, December first at eleven thirty A M and the public is welcome.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, now we are moving on to policy second reading and please just, you know, stop me. Um, and then we're going to go to retirements. Um, and I, I just did want to say we have uh five retirements totaling um over a hundred and ten years of experience in the district. Judy Buckley, uh, Kadia, Kathy, Susan, Delia, uh Pamela Gentile and Donna Goodwin. Uh, and uh, we wish you all the best in your retirement and thank you for your service to our schools. Okay, then we have um resignations, personnel items, L four appointments, L five leave of absence, L six substitute uh student placement, L seven, six period compensation, L eight curriculum and instruction, L nine, student service, L ten transfer reassignment. And we're moving on to um uh the curriculum and instruction, M one Burlington, Burlington County Scholastic League membership. I believe M two is an action item, student overnight trips, revision. Can I get a uh emotion, please? Uh, Rob, second Beth. And the revision is a change in dates. Yes, okay. On the jazz ensemble trip to Hawaii.
I believe it's one day shorter. Is that right, Doctor Two? The dates were s- were shifted slightly and it's one day shorter.
That is correct. Yes.
Can I make a comment?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so I just want to say as a prior band parent, I um I want to stress that all band students attend trips regardless of they, if their families can pay. And this is because the band parent group and the band leadership do fundraising all year long um to ensure that every student can go on it. Maybe this is a model we should look at for other clubs, sports. I will say that band and I know with the music, it's, it's easy to charge money because we do it in the auditorium and you know, parents come and sometimes we have competitions. Um, you know, it's a lot of work. I'm not going to say it's not, but you know, the you know, like anything, your, your kid does it and that's what you do. But I just want to stress that this one organization I know raises a lot of money to ensure our students can go on these trips and you know, it's just something I want to share with everybody. Um, I don't know if it's a model we can use for everybody, but it is one thing that and the band leadership is very uh supportive of all that and everything. So, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Matt, anyone else? Okay.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
I just wonder, isn't there a possibility for our jazz ensemble to perform somewhere closer to home than Honolulu, Hawaii?
Point of order, point of order. We had discussion.
I voted no. I voted no.
Order.
I voted no.
Okay, thank you.
Christopher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Um, three, N J D O E twenty-four, twenty-five preschool operational plan, M four grant application amendment. Then we're going to student services and one commission for the blind and two educational placement. Uh, pupils twenty-three, twenty-four. Moving on to business, O one financial reports is an action item. Can I get a, a motion? Uh, Debbie, second Beth?
Daphne Kendall?
Epstein.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
You're meeting, Michelle.
Yes.
Uh, Rob Christopher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thanks, Matt. O two, fire evacuation drills. O three, fall bus safety drill. O four, determination of foreman sale of uh twelve million nine ninety-eight school bonds. Good luck with that, Matt. Uh, O five, registration travel agenda. And then we're moving on to our second public comment of the night.
I don't see anybody.
Nope. All right. So with that, we'll move on to the consent vote. Can I get a motion, please? Uh, Rob, second Brian?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Betsy Baglia?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Talk-Ponder?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Yes.
And agenda passes.
Thanks, Matt. And then with that, so thank you everyone for attending our meeting. I, I am grateful that we have such an engaged community. We do have excellent public schools and we do need to celebrate. Some of the accomplishments which we will start doing at our December or January meeting. So thank you for attending. Dr. Foster, is there anything you wanted to add? I know Betsy has her hand up as well.
No, I just, you know, I, I love the work of the board because we take our roles very seriously if we are committed fully. To our students and, and as you can see, very active in all aspects of our student learning. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Betsy?
And along the line, the celebratory lines, there are a lot of end-of-year concerts and other performances that we really hope that the members of the public will join. Us for, not just parents in our community, but other members of the public. Those will be on our website, but. We meet again December 12th, but some will take place before that. So please just check out the website and know that you're welcome to come to these events. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Betsy. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Beth, second Mara, all in favor? All right, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Take care. Bye.